The Board of County Commissioners is now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Mr. Jones, you lead some prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything you've done allowing us to be here today. Thank you for this wonderful place we all call home. Father, we ask that you would be with us today, Lord, in understanding and knowledge. God help us, Lord, to make decisions, Lord, not only that are convenient for us, but what we know to be the right decisions. Father, we thank you, Lord, for helping us and being with us as a board today in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda would be approval of the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries also. Next will be public comments. Please raise your hand, be recognized, come forward, state your name for the record. Come on out.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens of Franklin County. Mr. Chairman, what are the requirements for being placed on the agenda?
Alan, to answer your question on behalf of the chairman, on behalf of the board, I don't know about requirements. Basically, you submit a request to be in the agenda. You provide me with the information you want. And if there's other, if it's appropriate for the meeting, I put you on. If not, if I determine it's something that could be handled in a different manner, you're not...
Okay, thank you. I have requested time on the agenda so that I may speak to the commission to understand the reasons that the commissioners have taken the position of eliminating two-way communication with the public and have been turned down multiple times. As far as we know, Franklin County stands alone in not providing the public the right to speak to commissioners before a vote on an agenda item, much less hearing from your own lips the reasons you feel the way you do when citizens give input. It is impossible to know at public comments the issues within an agenda item that the commission will decide on, any agenda item, in advance. Only after the discussion of an issue can the public be in the position to ask intelligent questions and to receive answers. That is why it is a custom throughout Florida for commissioners to take public comment before taking action each and every time an agenda item comes to a vote. A few weeks ago, I had a conversation with Mr. Chairman after the meeting, and I was told that you had read my information document on what Gocola and Gulf County's public policies were, that you, he, did not see much difference. But, Mr. Chairman, there's a huge difference in that policy. That's why I'm up here now. The recently adopted written public comment policy overturns decades of precedent that ensured public integrity and access. I stand before you, having been the object of derision from your dais by at least one commissioner, in which not one commissioner said a word while I was publicly attacked, even though my name was not used. This has occurred several times. To all who are listening to me now, note that if one person can be silenced or attacked at will, all of us can be silenced or attacked. One day, you too might wind up on the wrong side of some commissioner's wrong side of the bed and be publicly humiliated, as some other citizens have recently been treated here in this very room. Mr. Chairman, I call for civility, transparency, and honest dealings with the public. We are not a hindrance to good government. We are the integral part and reason for government. In fact, we are the reason you sit here today. Please respect the part I and others like me play in being part of the governed. You have already soundly broken your own new policy. In your new policy, under the section entitled "Emergency Action on Matters Not on the Agenda That Requires Board Action Which Cannot Be Deferred," none of the roughly eight times that the agenda has been modified at the last two meetings was the issue and emergency. Yet commissioners modified the agenda anyway. This only serves as a public acknowledgement that you, the commission, make it up as you go, and that the rule of law and good manners only applies when and where you say it does. Thank you.
Any other public comment? There being no further public comment, we'll move on down to the rectory's report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing? I just got a couple of items, which has been very hot. We continue on cutting grass throughout the county and putting cover pipes in, digging ditches, and fixing shoulders. And one more that I got that I would like to ask for the board's approval for, a new pickup truck, which is some FEMA money that we have left.
You got it in your book?
Yes, sir. And I talked air and all about it, so we all good.
I got something, Chairman. Buster?
Yes, sir.
And Michael, is any way we can check with Howard on these trucks? Because them big trucks, he drive back and forth to Caravelle every day, driving, I think, four of them big ones?
Four, yeah.
Four of them diesel trucks, he's going over there, coming back. We need to get something smaller. They stay in tore up, they in and out of the shop. We can save money just on diesel, trying to get him some smaller little four-door trucks to work out of and use them for when we go out on the street to do storm damage and stuff.
Which we got. Two of our trucks are real old, I'm trying to get another year or two out of them, but that one is just shot, so...
You're saying, Commissioner, you want us to look at small trucks and see if they can do the same job that what he has?
They'll do the job that he needs done, picking inmates up. If he has a disaster, he can use the big trucks when he goes to fix the road. But he's bringing these big trucks over there and hauling his inmates, and it's just eating us up.
Okay.
Which you'd save a lot on fuel, is what he's saying. And the big trucks, what you use for shoulder driveways or during the storm and stuff, which would stay parked, you know, much of the time.
Something like a 150?
Yep, like I got a little small 150 four-door truck to haul them. They bring in four big trucks over, morning diesel trucks, over there, then back over here, then back over there to go to work, and it's just eating us up.
Yeah.
And they stay in broke down, tore up, it's $10,000, $12,000 to fix them every time.
Yeah, all your big new diesel trucks, they've got that stuff on them, and they have an issue with them.
Sitting there idling. That's what the guy told me, just sit there and idle a bunch, and it's just...
Yeah.
That one's been in the shop three times?
Three times. I spent probably $15,000 on it in two years.
Yep.
I'm sure that's something we can find off the sheriff's bid list, to be very honest with you.
Yeah.
Is the standard crew cab F-150?
Yeah.
Which should be automatic, not standard. Automatic.
Oh, yeah, no, I can't forget.
Now, we're gonna make you drive standard.
Yeah.
We're gonna make you drive standard, Al.
Why make a motion that we let Howard get his truck? Why she, look at what William was telling me, and see can you find something a little more economic for the...
We found one on state bid that we could get, which would be, you know, what, a bit of FEMA money we got left, so...
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation to the board is that you defer both of these matters. They seem to be tied together, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting for discussion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Sheeler.
Why?
Wait a minute. You mean we can't even take care of business up here?
It's not on the report that he filed?
Wait just a minute, wait just a minute, y'all. We gotta take care of business in here. I don't mean no harm by interrupting you, Mr. Sheeler, but we got, Commissioners, we gotta take care of business, don't we, Mr. Lockley?
That's right.
That's the way I feel about it. This is part, I mean, how are you, if that's the case, we ain't gonna never be able to take care of business up here, if we're gonna have to defer everything to the next meeting.
That gonna cost more money, deferring it.
That's right.
My question was, Howard, you said, Mr. Massey saying you're using four trucks to go over there and get inmates?
We got three big diesel trucks that we use, which is the four doors that you see working on side of the road, which is very expensive on fuel during the day, then back and forth to Caravelle. Used to, we'd pick the inmates up from the jail right here in East Point. Then they change it up, you know, the apple last night, so we Caravelle, so, which we can save a lot of money on fuel, which two old trucks we got, we gonna have to replace in the next year or so, because they just shot.
What I'm saying, you got to take four trucks over there to get prisoners, buying one truck is not gonna solve it.
No, I got money for now, for one, but we, you know, could get two more, you know, four to work truck, but I got the money now and the budget to get one of the trucks now. Yes, sir.
But that's still not gonna alleviate the other three, having to use the other three.
No.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, how many trucks do you...
At least three. If I got one now, that would leave two.
Well, the one truck that he's gonna get is from some FEMA money from some paperwork that he did on Algarve Point. There's another theme of PWR reimbursement there for about $60,000 on the relocation of Elstra Boulevard now. And I've got to contact the state trying to figure out, that request's been in there for four months, so it's possible you'll get $60,000 more dollars shortly. But I refer to you in that, where that money's gonna go. I mean, it's the money out of your department materials, and you might, for all I know, you need to reimburse your materials, so I don't know. But there'll be some additional money coming in the next month.
But you only wanna get one right now.
Well, I saw the money I've got in the budget.
And Mr. Noah made a motion to go ahead.
And the F-150s, the crew cab, is probably way cheaper than...
Thirty, thirty-two thousand, which the other big ones is 140. So they stay in the shop.
Yeah. So, I guess, along with what Alan said and Howard's saying, we'll be able to...
Yeah, what I'm saying, he comes to the prison, he gets them, he comes back to the road department, they get their equipment, then they go back to Caravelle, that's three, then they come back to...
Oh, I got you. Yes, sir.
I see it every day, it's just...
I got you, Nick. So, to make this progress, possible progress less, so you probably will get more trucks quicker if we're just, you know, buying like standard crew cabs, F-150s.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask a question in between that. Down the road in the long run, which one, I meant they cost more, but which one lasts longer?
Well, you, most of your trucks, your four-door or regular trucks, you get 10 years out of most of the time when they're trouble. But they got the new diesels they've come out with now, they just having a lot of trouble with them, so... They in and out of the shop. But one, we got 63,000 miles on it, which is about three years old, four years old, which ain't got no warranty or nothing, but it just stays in and out of the shop, so...
To follow up on Commissioner Lockley's statement, so, I know that diesel trucks, the bigger ones, are more expensive. Do they last longer than what a standard F-150 crew cab would last?
You figure $30,000 for a truck, that's how 130.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the price that they're...
Yeah, big dipper.
What you're paying for, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second on Mr. Lockley's motion.
I think that we're supposed to amend the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if the board feels like you have to take action this morning under your new policy, you would amend the agenda first, and then you would have a motion to purchase the trucks and make public comment under your new public comment policy.
Mr. Chairman, hold on, Mr. Noah. Let's have some discussion on this. We need to move ahead on business. If we have amendments to the agenda, I'm not quite so sure that we have to amend that agenda, amend the agenda every time we want to speak on the subject. Maybe we could take care of it at the beginning of the meeting, and when you call the meeting to order, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can say, is there any amendments for the only agenda at that time? And if there's any amendments to the agenda, let us approve all of it at one time, and then have public comment on it, and go on and move down. Like this, we're never gonna get no business taken care of.
Yeah, that, and you need to rate the department heads, if you've got stuff you wanna bring up, you need to submit that in your report, then there'll be no amendments to the agenda. You see what I'm saying, Mr. Howard?
I do.
Fonda, you understand what I'm saying? If you expect action to be taken, then it needs to be in your report.
Okay.
And it will cut all this confusion out, because this agenda goes out to the public on Friday. If you want us to take action on something, then it needs to be in your report, so we don't have to go through what we're going through right now. So, we need to be a little more careful about whatever you want us to take action on or consider, put it in your report.
Yep.
And then we wouldn't have to go through what we're going through right now. But according to the policy, we do need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on the... We got two motions on the floor.
Okay.
So we need to take back the motion that you made, Commissioner Lockley, and the second.
I rescind my second from the first motion.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to amend the agenda to deal with this item.
This one time, but we need to do a little bit better job from now on, so we're not taking all our time up in this meeting amending agendas.
Do we have a second to amend the agenda by Commissioner Lockley to amend the agenda to address this item? Any public comment on this particular item before the board takes action on purchasing a truck for road count with some FEMA funds that he has left in his budget? Any public comment? There being no further public comment?
Yes, well, you would vote first on the motion to amend, and then have the motion to...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Nah, I make a motion to purchase the truck.
I make the second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
I have something, sir. The only thing I think that really is kinda different for me, and maybe some of the commissioners can tell me if I'm wrong or not, there are, I do my best to not discuss anything with anybody or make any decisions till I'm sitting here, and sometimes our discussion leads to other things. If we're gonna have to amend our agenda, we might as well just not discuss anything, just straight vote on what's here, go to consent agenda and be done with it. I just, I don't see where our policy should cut out where we can't discuss anything and have a natural flow to the conversation. And if that's gonna mean we're gonna have to amend the agenda to do so, maybe we need to amend the agenda before we even start talking. I just, anyway, that's my two cents on it.
We need public comment again on the agenda...
I was called for public comment, yes, sir.
Public comment on this item, please come forward, state your name for the record. There being no public comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Anything else, Mr. Buster?
I see it, sir.
Anything for the board from Mr. Neighbors this morning?
Go get the truck.
Next, thank you, Buster. Next will be Mr. Fonda Davis, solid waste.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have two items on my report this morning for board approval. The first item is Lewis and Clark Circus at Kendrick Park in Caravelle for board's action. Lewis and Clark is requesting the use of Wheel S. Kendrick Sports Complex on November the 5th of 2018 for circus event.
What are you gonna have for circus?
Yes, sir. We done it in the past, last couple of years.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
That's the weekend of the festival, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Fonda, do they provide us with a liability policy covered, as candidates do?
Yes, sir.
Any other question? We do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Next item is Fall Festival at D.W. Wilson Sports Complex for board's action. Several local churches are requesting the use of D.W. Wilson Sports Complex on October the 31st, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, as for Fall Festival. Pastor Lally, he's out, he had come to me requesting the use of the field.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Tell them to send a prayer for me.
Okay.
I have a question. Fonda, the first group we just voted on, they're making money, correct?
Yes.
Okay, this church groups are not doing this for a profit?
That's correct.
I just question why we're even having to vote on it. It's public, properly, it's public use. That's my take on it.
That's the point, Commissioner.
We all wait down.
Just giving the use, if y'all just don't mind being, using the facility.
I mean, I just say it from sort of the perspective of using public property. You need to have some control about who's using what when, so this is one way for the public to know that there's gonna be an activity out there, so someone else doesn't wanna run out there and do it. I mean, it's one way to notify the public that there's an event going on. I agree there should be more action, or it should be deferred just...
This information is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, or it should just be deferred at the parks. Superintendent, it's his choice about who's using what when, but there needs to be some format of scheduling thing, so people know that there's an activity.
Oh, yeah. I don't disagree with that.
But I understand your question.
And like Adam was saying, normally, the public have been good about calling me up, asking me what's the steps, so, and what we tell them is, you post it, but it's a first come, first served basis. We don't just tie it down, I mean, you can post a note, say, well, you know, a memo or something that we're gonna have such and such going on at the park.
Well, if we vote on it, it better be tied down.
Yeah.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
So you want me to shut the park down, Commissioners?
Well, I mean, it's for them.
Okay.
So we just voted on.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
That's it for me, Commissioner.
I have one item that involves first serve after...
We got somebody to vote on, too. Okay, we already authorized it, Scott.
Yes, sir, I just, there's one legality that I wanted to just be certain of, because you had asked about a insurance policy with the previous company, and so I've contacted our company, and we do have an umbrella policy, but I need to know if that's needed, and if so, if you need to be listed as a certificate holder or as an additional insured, and if so, how that needs to be put on, how you want that put on the certificate.
Yes, it does, Franklin County needs to be added as an additional insured. There's no charge for that. I've never seen an insurance company charge for that certificate. Let me give you my card, and we can get together after the meeting, and I'll give you whatever information that you need to have answered.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we had everything covered. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Anything, both members have anything for Mr. Davis this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one item on my report that...
Okay.
The item number three on my, or item number two on my report deals with Island View Park. Board actually set maintenance responsibilities for Island View Park for Mr. Doug Hattaway, TPL project manager. At this time, the park is substantially complete and is being used by the public. Mr. Hattaway is still working with the general contractor on some warranty issues, and he's also talking to Mr. Schuer. But with the public using the park, someone needs to be monitoring trash and general maintenance of the park. The county already has a signed agreement with FDEP, which allows the county to be reimbursed for some $170,000 worth of park maintenance over the next 10 years, and the county can begin billing for maintenance if we accept maintenance responsibilities. Mr. Hattaway, on behalf of TPL, is making this request to the board. I have spoken to Mr. Davis, and he's willing to take over maintenance responsibilities. So unless Mr. Schuer has an additional way to describe it, I would ask the board to accept Island View Park for maintenance while we get the warranty issues straightened. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've reviewed the contract, there are a couple of legal issues involving some potential claims of lien that may be filed, but we don't think will be filed, and there's also an indemnity provision in the contract that I'm working through with TPL. So my suggestion, that meets board's approval, is approve the contract, contingent on attorney's review.
Pleasure, Board.
Second.
I make on the, on the attorney.
Contingent on, upon attorney's, uh...
Continue, yeah, contingent on the attorney, on my second.
You amend your motion, Mr. Jones?
No, sir, that's what I made, that's what I made my motion for.
Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Anything else from the board for Mr. Davis?
Yeah, let me, oh, Fonda, when they gonna be through on him, you know?
Lombardi?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
What about you, Michael?
Oh, Commissioner, I think, based on the last meeting we went last week, Wednesday or Thursday, days all got together, they should be through completely in November.
November?
Yeah. The electrician was actually rewiring the museum building, the white building, when we were there last week. They were also working on the ramp and working on the pair, observation pair. They have not started the deck and the pavilion as yet. I think that should be started sometime late this week or next week. But, yeah, that's what we are, it should be totally completed in November.
I just, the reason I was asking, a lot of people, when I'm going to do this stuff, a lot of my...
Yeah. And it's, I hate to say this, but it's just been one issue after the other that was, that we could not determine at the beginning of this project.
I know.
I mean, who knew about the diesel thing? Who knew about the structure, issues with the building, which really slowed everything down? And in the rain, that doesn't help either, so, you know, it's one thing after the other. We're getting there, it's like, surely, you see progress every meeting we go on there.
Well, it ain't none of y'all's fault, I mean, just, just, I might just, people just be asking me.
Yeah.
Maybe I tell them about, about the festival.
Yeah, that might be a good answer.
Still be open by the festival.
I also attended that meeting with Michael and Whitney out there, looked over what they were doing, and tried to get some kind of reaction as to when they would be through with that part. They were working, they had a bunch of people there working during it, and they've been working just about every day, as long as it ain't rained them out.
Full set of electricians were there when we were there last...
Air-conditioned ducts been put in, they're working.
And that also is all the data cables, because we'll have monitors in different locations for the museum, you know, to show, people can select as to how certain things are done, so all that's being done. So, about...
Any other, any other comments for Fonda?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Fonda, did we ever find out for sure about oil collection containers?
They were.
Yes, sir.
Should we have them before October, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. I was asking commissioners about the oil collection containers that we're gonna put in three different spots in the county, so we're gonna have them ready for the next fiscal year. Thank you, Fonda.
Any further comments from Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, we gotta build a cement pad for them?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
There being no further questions, thank you, Fonda.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Burnett.
Good morning, Commissioners. First item on the agenda is request the board's approval of opening of the debris removal and debris disposal and debris monitoring services, RFPs.
So moved.
Sir? They gotta open them up.
Open them up.
Commissioners, you don't need a motion to open them.
Jeez, more than proof, that's where I went from.
Pam, you ought to explain that, these are just...
These are, these are just RFPs.
These are RFPs, there's no qualification, there's no money, and there's no price tag on them.
Yes, there is.
There's a price tag.
These are RFPs. What we'll do is, Commissioner, second on the agenda was to request the board approval These are RFPs. What we'll do is, Commissioner, second on the agenda was, uh, the request of board approval for a review committee like we have done in the past, which would be me, myself, Tress Damaron, and Whitney Coles. And it's, uh, it's a scoring sheet. And yes, they send in their prices, and yes, there's ten, there's points for their prices. But it gives us an overall of being able to look at how many years they've been in business, uh, requests, um, uh, from other counties that they have been a vendor for. It, it's a whole scoring sheet set up. This was done by our consultants so that we make sure that we're in compliance with the two hundred. And, uh, they did a really good job, cause they listed every piece of equipment that you can imagine that would be used for debris removal. I mean, we've never had an extensive list like this before. So there shouldn't be any surprises, uh, on anything that would come up with us as far as a piece of equipment that was used.
Okay, Pam, I was wondering, cause yesterday basically you emailed me, you do have, since it's an RFP, you do have to read the company name and the price.
Uh.
I wanna be clear about that, you have to read the price today, if it's RFP.
Uh, are you gonna do the, the price list?
Well, we have to, since it's already hundreds of items per item.
It, it's per, it's per item, I mean, it's listed out in there, per item.
Attorney, can tell if I'm wrong in that deal.
Well, I don't know how extensive we may be here reading a list of numbers, so I need more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to open it and read it.
Do your debris, um, debris removal. Cause they listed every piece of equipment.
How many submissions?
Okay, so I think I'm all to talk as easily open. Uh, and this is from, uh, RE, uh, from Omni Construction out of Pearl River, Louisiana. Do you want to think debris removal? Yeah, I'm a debris.
The top one is your debris monitor, Michael.
Yeah, these are.
Those are debris monitoring.
We're just gonna open one right now.
Did we get any notes?
No, sir.
Okay, and this is from, uh, Omni Construction, Pearl River, Louisiana.
I'll show you where it's at, tapped out.
It says, fine, so.
Okay.
Proposal, let's just get that E.
Mm-hmm, well, it's actually a proposal, what it is. Oh, let's see. Let me read it.
Which pages?
It is the last one. No, it's all priced out per hour or cubic yards. For each thing.
So you have three pages of, uh.
Yeah, I mean, you have more than that. Because you don't really know, you don't know how many hours it's gonna take, so what we do is unit price or cubic yard price. So the county knows that, you know, you're gonna pay this much, uh, per cubic yard for what they move. And then when we score them, we go through and we add these up and average them out, and that's how we get the, the, the one with the lowest, I mean, with the, the greatest amount of points is, uh, the one that we pick as vendor. See?
There's at least eight different pages, single space of items and pricing. I would say just read the name of the company.
Yeah.
This will all be a couple of records.
Yeah, this is, this is what we go through and do for y'all. We go through these and we score it all out and then bring it back for y'all's approval. As we've done in the past, just, we've never had an extensive list of equipment like this before. I mean, our consultant, I don't think they missed anything.
Well, maybe I have to quit this for a moment, because years past, I mean, this is for, this is for purpose, years past FEMA had a cost sheet. FEMA said if you had a twenty yard, cubic yard dump truck, this is what FEMA was gonna reimburse you for, so has the world changed now?
Mm-hmm.
Cause it used to be a set fix, that was what it was, that you, you know, you got paid for that amount of money, and there was no, no argument, no negotiating, FEMA paid you that. Whether it cost you to use that much or not, that's what you got to reimburse.
Right. So read, read us the rest of the name for this, uh, this whole removal debris.
Okay, so that's, that was the first one. In that case, can I just read the name off of the label?
It may not be the same as what's on the inside.
Yep. Uh, this one is Bergeron, was, which is actually, um, a previous contractor that we had. And they are from Fort Lauderdale. Now, in our contracts, Commissioners, we do state that they have to make every effort of using local labor. That's a must in there. And I know we've several of them that helped with cleaning up that debris, they can get on their list so they can use them when we have a disaster. That, that's a must in our contract. Next one is SDR, Southern Disaster Recoveries, uh, they are out of Jacksonville, Florida. This one is, this one is Sierra's Environmental Services, and they're out of Sarasota, Florida. Sierra, C-E-R-E. This one is TRF Enterprises, and they are out of, uh, Linder, Texas. This one's Custom Tree Care Disaster Response, uh, and they are out of Topeka, Kansas. This one is DRC, Emergency Services, and, let's see, this one is from. Summers, Alabama. This is Grubbs, uh, Emergency Services, and where is Grubbs? Hudson? Hudson, Florida. Crowder Guff, and this one's from Theodore, Alabama. These are your debris monitoring, we have two of those.
What they, what they have to have a regular state license?
Yes, sir, they have to have a Florida, uh, license, yes, sir, they do. Yeah, this is debris monitoring.
But have not yet.
We do all of them together, cause it was, it was together. Um, and this one is Debris Tech, and this one is from Missouri. Oh, Mississippi.
Pickin' Un, Mississippi.
Pickin' Un. Uh, this one is Tetra Tech, and where are they from? Maclin, Florida.
We need a motion and a second by the board.
So moved, let them.
Second.
Try to send it to the review committee.
Send them to the review committee.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lock, a second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries. And you have, uh, a third request, Ms. Pam, the next request on your list.
Uh, request the board's approval to pay the following invoices also attached, um, from the East Point, uh, Fire Victims Fund. Eight twenty-nine eighteen, wind supply at East Point, that was, uh, one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and eighty cent. Uh, that is for the culverts that we put in that were damaged during, uh, the debris, uh, removal that we did out there for them. Second one is nine seven eighteen, Taylor's Building Supply, that's a hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cent. Uh, that is more electrical hookups for the travel trailers, since they didn't have any in order to be able to, um, hook them into electricity.
Pleasure, the board.
So moved, second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey to pay these invoices. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Why Pam, can I ask a quick?
Mm-hmm.
Pam, um, I mean, you ain't got nothing to do with it, and we ain't got nothing to do with it, but when the fire occurred, they dug, they had to make them breaks, fire breaks?
Yes, sir.
And, um, I guess, Pam, not do they, to do, I guess my question is, do them fire breaks gonna feed up forever, cause they causing flooding?
I've contacted forestry, um, Clint and them, um, and my understanding Clint was supposed to go out and talk to Whitney.
Yeah.
But I will find out if he's gotten, normally, yes, sir, they, I mean, once they cut a fire break, normally it's, it's there unless you decide to dig it out. But I will contact Clint again today and see if there's anything they can do for her. I understand, but we've had a tremendous amount of rain that's also compounded.
Yeah.
Compounded that problem. Um, so I will contact him again today and see if there's anything that they can, they can do about that. Cause again, you're right, county employees, we, we can't put a tractor on there to remove that, that break from them. And I, and I really don't know what the law is as far as when forestry comes in and puts a fire break in.
Given the circumstances, though, whether it was loss of life or, or thing, I would a lot rather had a fire break in my yard than losing my home or life or pets or something like that. A, a fire break, you can always fill in if you have to or whatever. I'm just glad they were able there, able to be there to do quick thinking and go ahead and get it done, to make some, some of those homes.
Me too, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, they need it.
Yes, a lady on Buck Street, she sent the pictures, Whitney something, that's.
Weld something?
Yeah, had flooded her whole yard around the edge of a trailer.
Uh, like I said, I'm aware of that, she sent them, we seen them on Facebook, we, I, I've contacted Joey Toronto and, and Clint. And, um, and my understanding from Joey, which I forwarded the email that he had handed off to Clint, and they were gonna supposedly go out and talk to Whitney and see what could be done.
I don't know if they can cover them up, but, um, what they can do, but Tony's back there in the back, he worked for, for years, he could let us know if they could cover them up or how they could do it. I don't know. Yeah, they, they cut some fire breaks in the yard, does the state go back and cover them up, or?
Well, they have to gain, they would have to gain authorization, excuse me, from the property owner, because the emergency is over with. And now it's being private property, so they would have to gain authorization from the property owner to go back on the normal process, just to have your evans back into the center where the fire breaks are, flatten out the ground.
Okay.
I will contact, I'll contact Clint about that, and then I'll let Whitney know that she has to give them permission.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commissioners from Mr. Brunel this morning? Thank you, Pam.
I've got one thing I wanna bring up, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Pam?
It's Pam.
Okay.
But it's, it's, um, concerning Mr., uh, one of the items in Mr. Schuer's report, uh, with the ESF fifteen. Cause Pam is the Emergency Management Director, she's over the ESFs, fifteens, eights, nines, all of them. So I think she needs to have some input into this, what Mr. Schuer, Mr. Schuer, have you gotten with Pam on this situation with the ESF fifteens?
Um, can you be more specific? If you mean this final version of this document, the answer is no.
That item that you got in your report?
No, ma'am, that exact contract has not been given to Pam.
Okay, well, we don't need to discuss it, if, if Pam's not gonna be part of the discussion, we don't need to be discussing it then, do we?
That's a matter for the board, I'll, I'll follow whatever direction the board gives me, my direction was to bring back this contract this meeting.
If we're gonna talk, talk about capital area action, you know, people taking over the ESF fifteen, the ESF fifteen, that's a volunteer organization that takes donations during a time of disaster, that falls up underneath the Emergency Management Department. Then it needs to be the, uh, Emergency Management Director that needs to be consulted also. And I'm just, I'm just saying, it's respectful to make sure that you include Ms. Pam Brunel in it as Emergency Management Director. Now, the rest of the Commissioners may not feel like that, but I do. And if we're gonna have a discussion on anything to do with ESF fifteens, Ms. Brunel needs to be part of the conversation. That's just my comment, Mr. Schuer, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
So you need to wait around until attorney's report comes up, Pam, will you be part of the discussion of what's in this report?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Alright.
Okay.
Any other comments from Ms. Brunel? Any other comments from the Commissioners? Thank you, Pam. Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestran, Extension Office Director.
Morning Commissioners, I don't have any items in my report that require board action today.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get your call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you happy now?
I am happy, yes, ma'am, thank you.
I just wanna make sure he's happy.
Eric, Eric, where are we at on your building down there?
Um, still waiting for a hundred percent drawings from the architectural firm that's working on it, but they are making progress, I've given them comments on the fifty percent drawings, so they are moving forward, and as soon as we get those, we can start talking about procedure for going out to bid for contractors.
Okay. Any other comments from Mr. Eric from the board this morning?
Mr. Schimmel has something to, it's not particularly addressed to Mr. Eric, but I thought about it because he's there. Have we ever heard back from Duke Michael about any of this stuff with the spray? I mean, I don't know, the fact that he helped us in previous years just made me think about it.
Yes, I'm still waiting for breakdown from Duke that I should get this week, as to the exact, let me put it this way, exact chemical breakdown of what was used, and where, I, I asked Danny Wells to view it and any other effects that it might have. So as soon as I get that, I'll inform the board, and I'll, I'll send it out to more than just Eric, I'm gonna send it to a few sources to see, you know, how, just get an opinion, how they feel about it, and then report back.
What about the no spray number that Mr. Wilson was talking about, you can call the number and get on the no spray list?
I've done a checking on that also, to, tell me exactly how that works and how it would apply to us in Franklin County.
I think, I think that's the best thing to do.
Yes.
There's the stuff like, the concerns of it running into our bay and all, I think that's what we need to try to see if it's possible that the county can get on that no spray list, and they have to find another way of.
Yes.
Curtailing, you know, curtailing their, their spraying and, and having it's chemical reach the bay.
Yes, and then how, how, what I also asked Danny is, how then do you deal with the weeds and the trees that are affecting the power lines? Because we wanna know both sides of stories, you know, of what, what it is exactly, yes.
They can cut them with a tractor. I mean, or you just dig them up, or put somebody to work.
Any other comments from Mr. Eric while he's here? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next will be Ms. Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before I hit my action item, let me just give a couple updates for this week's events. Uh, we have a gardening program this afternoon at the East Point branch at one thirty. Despite our heat, we are gonna be looking toward the fall, so this one is fall gardening production for a full pantry. Uh, tomorrow is Talk Like a Pirate Day, so, uh, the kids will have a program at four o'clock at both locations, they can come dressed as their, as a pirate, and we'll have games, snacks, and a lot of fun. Our STEAM programs are back in session, so they're at four o'clock at each location on Thursdays. And, uh, our Carabao branch, uh, has returned to its regular, uh, operating hours of Monday through Friday, nine to six, and are still Saturday of ten to two. I do have the one action item, and I do ask, uh, I'm requesting the approval of the board to allow LA doors to install the necessary handicap closure with push pods to the Carabao branch entrance to provide ADA compliance. The installation will require some additional electrical work by Kate's Electric, who will run the electric, to connect the power and install, uh, an inside switch to control the power when the doors are locked. We have to turn that power switch at night, cause if someone engages that, uh, push pod outside, it can burn the motor on the, uh, door lock, so we don't want that to. pushpod outside, it can burn the motor on the, uh, door lock, so we don't want that to happen, so they would, uh, need to wire that. Um, total estimate is three thousand and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, I did discuss this, uh, with Michael Ron, and he referred me to contact Shane, and Shane was able to set up our meetings with the appropriate installer. Uh, and, uh, we worked with Mike Kates to get the, uh, quotes, so I do ask the, uh, we have most of the money in our budget, and Michael referred me that we could do a budget transfer if we couldn't cover all of it, which would be probably very little from what I'm looking at at this point. So I'm asking the board's approval for that.
I did, commissioners. I checked with the finance office, and they said they could cover most of the costs, and there was overrun, you know, I'll bring back a transfer to you guys at a later date. But we really need to get those doors at that library, get those installed and get it done.
Say good to the board.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it gonna have a backup source for, just in case the, for manual.
Uh, right, it's a pushpod, it's wireless, it's run by a nine-volt battery, as far as the outside unit, um, so there shouldn't be any issue. And if it does not work, we just have to turn the power and the door will still operate as usual. We just have some that are in wheelchairs and motor scooters and a lot of hand walkers, you know, because we've got elderly that carry their big book bags back in, so that door is very heavy, so I appreciate the approval. Make our customers.
I just don't want them to get stuck.
Right, no, it, it shouldn't, and hopefully when LA Doors comes, we'll find out that out as well. Um, it should be a release to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
All opposed? Motion carries? Anybody have, uh, any board members have anything from Ms. Lance this morning? Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you all.
Next will be Mr. Jason Puckett, Airport Manager.
Good morning, commissioners. I will be brief. Um, just a quick update on the projects at the airport. Uh, our drainage project is effectively completed. Uh, the contractor is taking care of a few punchline items, uh, but that, that, that project is basically done. The access road project that I've been telling you about for the last few months, uh, the design is complete, and AFCON is, uh, currently coordinating with the county on all of its permitting, and will hopefully have something, uh, to go out to bid, uh, hopefully in, on October. The economic development study, uh, all that work is complete, and we're just waiting on a good, uh, commission date of, I think Alan's helping coordinate that, uh, when they will come in and, and give the presentation. Um, we do have a, uh, action item for our, our marking grant. Uh, we have six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars allocated from the FDOT to, to re-mark and re-stripe all the runways. Uh, we have a, a quote from Highlight, uh, who is the, who's the state contractor to, to re-mark airports for five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And so I need, I need signature from that today to, to get them to go ahead and get started.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
All opposed? Motion carries?
And just so you know, that, that is gonna be re-marking all three runways. I know I stood before you before in the past, and we could only get funding for two, but we've, we've wrangled and hard-armed our way to get, to get, to get all three runways, uh, re-striped. Uh, quick FBO update.
Let me just say on that part, you know, because for years, because I was one of the ones saying, look, that, that third runway is never gonna be used, FTT is never gonna fund it. Well, for some reason, how FTT is funded.
Some reason.
So we'll just keep on that pathway till we have a, keep the third active runway as long as we can. I mean.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
And so our FBO update, uh, we have representatives from Centric here today, Andrew and Tara, but, um, in July and August, they had two hundred and eighty arrivals to the airport, two hundred and fifty-three overnights, and, uh, three hundred basically, uh, courtesy car trips to town. So in two months, you had two hundred and fifty folks stay overnight in our community. Uh, that's, that's, that's quite a bit in two months, so. Um, doing well there at the FBO. Centric is doing a fantastic job, uh, and we're, we're trying to negotiate some, some, some different ideas to, for our facilities and our hangars and that kind of thing to, to kind of look at a longer term.
If I can jump into that.
Yeah, sure.
All right, and this is part of my report, but I'll just jump to this section of a, a Triumph Fund. So again, I met with the Centric people, they're doing a great job. They have eight employees at the airport right now. That's double from what they had when they took over. So there are eight employees in the payroll. They are expanding the business as much as the market will allow. Um, but, uh, one of the things that, that I learned at the last Triumph meeting, uh, and I'll go into the detail, we'll get to talk about Triumph overall, was that the, the Triumph Board, or the staff at least, would like to see a project from the airport. Well, as you all know, one of the conditions of Triumph is you, you can get money out of Triumph if you can promise to commit, create jobs. You know, that, that's what they, that's the Triumph connection. They wanna see, uh, jobs being created for every dollar they invest. So our most logical person to create more jobs at the airport is Centric. So I went out there after the Triumph meeting and talked to them about what building we could build that they could use and would create more jobs. And so they are in the process of looking at that. Um, one idea, and this is just one idea, would be a new FBO. Uh, the FBO that's out there now is twenty-five years old, it's showing its age. Uh, maybe we would build a new one that would allow them to expand their operations, or a general maintenance building would be another building that perhaps they could, they would utilize. But it's really, uh, at this point, I tell you all this, you know, we wanna hear from them what kind of building they would use the most to create the most jobs, because that's what Triumph's gonna look at. Uh, Triumph is interested in providing more money to the county, um, but it's gotta be tied to job creation. And so if we had another vendor out there, another, another, somebody else who is creating jobs, you know, we could offer the same deal. Right now, Centric is the people who are operating the air- airport, and they're the ones who have the most ability to create jobs fast. And so that's where we're looking. And I would say, I told them, you know, a million, two million dollars is the range of money that might be available, depending on how many jobs are created. So it's a substantial investment at the airport.
It, it is, and, and with that being said, uh, I'm gonna contact FDOT. They all, they love to do a partnership on, on, on fund matching and that kind of thing, and, and say, we have some funds allocated from another revenue stream, revenue source. Is there a way to combine with FDOT to get, to maybe get a bigger project done? So might be a way to, to go symbiotic relationship with FDOT on that.
And just so much to know, because the last time the county was involved in, in running the airport, uh, we had all sorts of problems getting rental cars. They now have a contract with, um, not Avis, not.
Enterprise.
Enterprise, so they have rental cars out there, they have U-Haul trailers out there. I mean, they are expanding the operations beyond what the previous, uh, FBO had, so they're doing a great job, and I hope the community is aware that they're out there, and if you need a U-Haul, that's one place to get it, maybe other places, uh, but anyway.
Um, so second, another item is, 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 uh, Mr. John Bone rents, uh, one of our hangars at the airport. Um, his, his lease was for fifteen hundred dollars a month for the first portion of his, of his, of his lease, and then it would jump to twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, he has had quite a bit of issues with, I think, Smokey, you've been out there, quite a bit of issues with, with, with utilities costs, and, and his utilities are, are just astronomical. Uh, he has not paid the additional lease up until, I believe, last month, and so there are six months there that he is, that he has basically withheld.
Let me jump into this, you don't mind, because I was, I was out here at the airport when this happened. There was a tremendous water leak out there at the airport, and the city of Apalachico assumed that it was associated with the hangar that Mr. Bone rented, and they began billing Mr. Bone, uh, this huge amount of water. It's happened over Christmas time, as a matter of fact, right before Christmas, I took the chairman out there, we met Mr. Bone, we assured him that we would try and get the city to be reasonable. Uh, we contacted the city, the city did in fact stop the leak, uh, but never changed the billing. Come to find out, and I say this fairly surely, come to find out, it was never water going through Mr. Bone's meter to begin with. It was a complete screw-up that we could never get resolved. Uh, Mr. Bone, uh, felt, and he had to pay his water bill, otherwise the city was gonna cut the water off. So Mr. Bone had to pay this additional money that was not really necessarily entitled to the city in order to keep his water flowing. He ultimately, I think in his judgment, I haven't talked to him, paid for several months his higher bill, finally got it down or got it resolved, uh, and now he has now gone to the rent that he should be paying us. And I know what Mr., and I say I know, I haven't talked to Mr. Bone, I suspect Mr. Bone felt, look, I'm paying some government money, and it's not my fault that, that it's the city of Apalachico overbilling me when this, when it should be going to the county. So he has, he's now got that resolved with the city, he has never got any money back from the city, but he is now paying the twenty-five hundred dollars a month rent that he should be paying us. It's my recommendation to you all that we forego those, those four to six months that he should have paid us, because he's now current, uh, I, I, I think the city of Apalachico was wrong, but I can't, myself, the chairman, and Mr. Bone all independently tried to get that resolved. We never got it resolved, but he's now current with what he owes us, and I'd rather have him in the hangar using it and paying the rent that we want him to pay. And so I'm willing enough to talk to Aaron about this, just forego those, those past months where he didn't pay.
And starting now?
Starting now.
With the, with the increase rate.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I agree, but we need to do that by motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a motion and a second.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion?
I think he pulled the P and R.
Yes, sir.
That, that, did the county, did not the city.
I, I agree completely. Uh, I will tell you, I, I might agree completely, but there's gonna be another problem out there, most likely, when the, when the city's new water rates go into effect. We may see this all over the place.
Is that gonna really happen?
But he gonna come back and say he.
No, no, it's no question.
Yeah.
Well, if you gonna come back now, he got to go up on the, the city that went up on him, I guess he.
No, I, 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 I hope, I, I say that, Commissioner, if he doesn't, we'll just have to forego his lease.
And, and let me say, the only reason why I'm doing that is because I can remember a time when he didn't get no money at all out there. Um, and, and that was no fault of Mr. Bone to have that water leak or whatever. So I mean, I don't have no problem, but in the future, you know, he needs to make sure he sticks to it.
He need to go tell the city to give him, get money.
We, it may come to that, but we got the money. He's paying us now what he owes us, and I'm just, I'd rather look forward to the future as opposed to trying to fight a battle.
Where it all started, they said he had a leak in the building, so I went out there, me and Alan went out there, and I shut the meter off. Had him go in there and turn his, anyways, there was no leak in the building. They were claiming there was a, a bad leak up under the slab of the new hangar out there, and that was not the case. The leak was before it ever got to his building. Uh, so that's, that's all in limbo. As Alan said, let's move forward and, and try to keep the thing going, and if, and if he can't pay it now, from here forward, then we got a problem.
Sure.
We got a problem. We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, you had a comment?
No, I'm good.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
No.
All opposed?
No.
But the record reflects, it's likely opposes. Vote carries four to one.
There's one, there's one live, and I'm gonna bring it up.
Okay, thanks.
Because this is kind of awkward. Uh, Mr. Puckett. So, uh, as you all may recall, when Mr. Puckett started as the airport manager, he got us fixed, uh, stipend from the county of a thousand dollars a month, plus he was entitled to one percent of, uh, of airport, uh, grants, just like, uh, the previous, uh, airport manager did. Sometime about six or eight months ago, I forget exactly when, it was in the spring, uh, we had a meeting with, with the FDOT, and FDOT told the county, and I believe I reported to you board, that Mr. Jason was no longer able to get, entitled to receive, uh, reimbursement of one percent of the grants because, uh, and I forget now all the reasons why, but essentially, they just said, no, an airport manager can't get one percent of a grant. So he lost that compensation that was part of his overall package. He has operated just on the thousand dollars a month that the county provided him, as we said we would, but he lost the, the one percent. He's asked for, and during the budget process, when I wasn't here in front of you all, I did talk to Aaron, and we put into, Aaron put into the airport budget a five hundred dollar increase, so his, his compensation would can be fifteen hundred dollars a month, not a thousand dollars a month, effective October one, to try to make up part of the money that he lost when he could not get any air, any FDOT money. So my request to you all this morning is to allow, uh, the stipend that Mr. Puckett is getting to go to fifteen hundred dollars a month, effective October one. That'll be a total of eighteen thousand dollars a year, which is a six thousand dollar increase, but that's much less than he was going to be getting had he got that one percent.
Don't that change the scope of the contract, though, that we have with Mr. Puckett?
It'd be an amendment to the contract, and it's on his report, so it's not, I'm, I'm.
I know that, but haven't we in the past said that anybody that receives any kind of grants from federal government or state government or anything, if you lose that, then no, you just lose it? Isn't that what we've always said?
Well, I, I, I'll refer you all.
I'm just putting you in the spot.
Yeah, I, I mean, in this case, I mean, we could say that, but, but the problem is, it was a overall pa-, he was getting money from the county and that, and he cannot operate, well, I say this, I mean, he can say it.
If I can, if I could just interject, just, and I, and please don't misunderstand my spirit when I say this. Um, I, I, I entered a contract with the county, and, and my agreement was to be one percent of all airport-related grants and one thousand dollars a month stipend. Uh, the FDOT has stopped reimbursing the county. But I'm, under my contract, I'm still obligated to receive one percent of the grant. What I'm saying is, I'll, I'll readjust my contract and agreement. I can't help that the county doesn't get reimbursed by the FDOT anymore, but if we can make up a difference on the stipend end to help cover the cost, then that's fine, but I, I can't, I cannot continue to do the job for, you know, thirty percent of what we agreed to originally.
Let me say something, Mr. Chairman. I'm not opposed to what you're saying, sir.
Yes, sir.
But the county didn't stop DOT from funding anymore either. They did it.
Exactly.
Into the all of their own.
I understand.
So we're not responsible for that either.
But I'm bearing the lion's share of it, and that's, and that's what I'm willing to do, and, and I just need some comp, and I need some considerations all about it.
It's coming up today, and it's already been put into your budget, but it's coming up after we've already had budget hearings and budget talks.
Well, no, she put it in there.
Exactly, but I, we didn't know about it to the day that it was.
No, I know, and, and it's, I wasn't here during your budget process.
I understand.
I think he's done a tremendous job out there for us. Uh, I don't make motions and seconds, but I think he's done such a good job, and continues to do us a good job, so. It is pleasure of the board.
Well, we can't create no jobs, too. Do everybody be wanting to create one? I mean, I'm like, we didn't, the government, I feel like, the government, uh, they, they, they the one who cut, we didn't cut, we, 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 we on and out, I was.
My, my, my compensation was written from Franklin County, and then you had, you had asked for reimbursement from the, from the FDOT.
Can I ask a, can I ask a clarifying question? So is your, your understanding, Mr. Puckett, because FDOT changed their rules, that the county is responsible for that?
I'm, I'm, what I'm asking for is.
I asked, yes, sir, no? Are you thinking that the county is responsible for what FDOT changed?
I'm ask, I'm thinking the county is responsible for the, for the, for the, for the obligation in the contract that we have written, yes. Yes, I do.
Pleasure of the board.
And it was written, it was written that way without much thought that there was a, gonna be a change on that FDOT's part. This has been going that way for fifteen years, twenty years. I mean, FDOT has always reimbursed one percent.
But we, we know one day it's gonna change, and one day they gonna come in and ask for that money they done put out there. They gonna ask for some. They ain't gonna keep on dumping in there for nothing. They put a lot of money out there. They been putting it out there. And then nothing happening out there. One day they gonna come in, and they gonna say you got.
Well, I mean, everything that FDOT gives us money for is out there. I mean, restriping, buildings, you know, they, they, there is not an issue of us not building what they gave us money to build.
No work out there, that's what I'm talking.
Commissioner, I, I agree, and we're in a competitive market with airports all across in Florida trying to get, uh, activity out there.
That's what I'm talking about. Them people are not gonna spend all that money for nothing.
No, sir.
It's coming up again. You get ready for it. Just a matter of time.
Well, I'm not trying to, uh, stick anything down this morning, or I just have a little heartburn with the way this has been done. And that's my right to feel that way. Uh, I do know that this Gulf to Gatston corridor that has been trying to be enacted, now's not the time to blow that up, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve it. But I just wanna make sure that my concerns were addressed this morning.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Jones, if I, if I could, if I may, and, and just to try to answer that, that, uh, that, that, uh, objection you might have had. Um, when all this went down, I talked with, with Alan and Michael and Aaron, and, and, uh, basically, I was at a point where my, my compensation has been cut in almost sixty percent. Um, I was asked to continue working in good faith that something would be done at the next fiscal meeting. Um, I don't want you to think that there was something I've done to try to hard-arm the.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
Because I've, I've been operating for eight months in good faith that something would be hap- would happen.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that if a, another agency that we're in partner with, or anything, decides they don't wanna do anymore, we're not responsible for that.
I understand.
There's no way we can be responsible for that.
Right.
You understand? I mean, if the state decides tomorrow, we, we have to tear up all the asphalt and make everything a lime rock road again, there's nothing we can do about it.
Right.
It is what it is.
I understand.
That was my whole point.
Right, and I, and I appreciate your concession this morning. It helps me out tremendously. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Puckett? Anything else from Mr. Puckett from the board this morning?
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is Ms. Jacqueline Davis, Refuge House. Please come forward, state your name for the record. Good morning.
My name is Jacqueline Davis. I am the Refuge House Domestic Violence Counselor for the local area, and also a co-located advocate who works alongside with DCF with cases that have domestic violence issues. On this morning, if approved and supported, I have a proclamation. October, each year is known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have what we call a Domestic Violence Awareness Event each October. This year will be October 19th on a Friday from 12 to 2, and it will be a luncheon. And on today, as stated, if it's approved, I do have the proclamation and would like to read it for your hearing. Is that okay? Okay, thank you, sir. Whereas domestic violence is both a violation of an individual's privacy, security, and humanity, and is a crime which impacts society as a whole, then we conclude that perpetrators of domestic violence must be held accountable for their actions. And now therefore, I, did I start it? I'm sorry. Let me go back up to the top. The Franklin County Proclamation declaring October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is an epidemic in our nation, state, and county, resulting in thousands of battered victims, traumatized children, and broken families each year crossing all economic, racial, and social barriers, and whereas the children in violent homes are also in danger of victimization and are more likely to succumb to drugs, abuse, truancy, and emotional disturbances, and are likely to exhibit violent and unlawful behavior in later life than children raised in abused free homes. And whereas domestic violence is both a violation of an individual's privacy, security, and